Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's School Committee meeting. It is Thursday, April 25. First up on our agenda is Administrative Business, the Consent Agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Steven moves it. Suzanne, is that a second?
Yes.
Any discussion first? Seeing none, Valerie, your vote?
Yes.
Mariah? Andy?
Yes.
Suzanne? I'm abstaining, sorry. Couldn't get off yet.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, next up, we have possible vote to approve the early GMP budget for the Pierce School Project Consigli Construction, Amendment Number Six for thirteen million one hundred and fifty thousand nineteen dollars. Helen, would you like to talk about this for a little bit?
I want to move it first.
Want to move it? Okay.
Then I'll talk. Yes, this is, uh, I think everybody is aware. We did an early package for the demolition of the Pierce School, and the good news is it came in two point six million under the estimates. The, uh, that money will, uh, stay within the project in case there's, there's some, uh, problems going forward or eventually be returned to the town or not borrowed, let's put it that way. But right now, this is really good news. We have also, uh, I think, we, have we met since April 12th, since the meetings when we got unanimous approval? Uh, have we met? Maybe not. Okay.
If not.
So we, you know, there was an issue about the Article ninety-seven over at the, um, at the field and putting in the geothermal wells there. In order to do that, we needed an Article ninety-seven, um, dispensation, so to speak. Oh, look at how cutie is. Sorry, I couldn't resist. And, um, we needed to get unanimous, unanimous approval from the Conservation Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission, uh, which we got all in one night along with the, uh, Select Board voting the, um, the amendment, uh, to go forth to town meeting. So we are really on our way. We had a public for, should I do this now or do you want me to do it when I talk about capital later?
When we talk about capital later, but this was a good introduction.
Just to do the demolition, to take out all the utilities, do the demolition and, um, and then we'll move forward in, uh, the school will move out the end of June. Um, and, uh, the contractor will start July 8th and hopefully be taking down some of the building in the fall and winter.
All right, very good. So is there a second to Helen's motion? Andy seconds. Steven, your vote?
Yes, Suzanne, was that a question or were you?
No, I was gonna second Andy. It's fine.
Okay, so Steven votes yes. Valerie?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, so with that, we will now move to public comment. And our first speaker is Mr. Ruby Kita.
He's joining us as a panelist now.
Hi, I hope you can hear me. All right. Great, thank you. Um, hello, School Committee members. Uh, my name is Ruby Kitab. I'm a parent of a senior at Brooklyn High School. I've been speaking during public comments at the School Committee ever since October 7th, advocating for critical changes in our schools related to the rise in antisemitism. Uh, following a petition that was signed by hundreds of parents in consistent efforts, we had a listening session in January at the high school with over one hundred Jewish parents and caregivers, together with district and high school leaders. I believe that David and Suzanne also attended the session as observers. The parents essentially asked for three things. The first was to bring back the affinity spaces for Jewish and Muslim students during advisory block at the high school. Um, the second was to enhance the curriculum and provide professional development to combat antisemitism and teach about the Holocaust. And the third was to build policies and procedures around hate speech. I'm very happy that the high school brought back the affinity spaces. My daughter says it feels great. She's developing bonds with other Jewish students and she really feels like it's a safe space where she can discuss things that she can't really freely talk about in the school. Uh, we've been told on professional development that it takes time, months if not years. We would like to see some progress there as well. Uh, but personally, I haven't seen anything concrete yet. The third request around policies and procedures for hate speech is the topic tonight. When we asked about the definitions of hate speech, what constitutes hate speech and how the district collects reports, the answers was essentially there's no policy. What this means, as I understand it, is that each school leader can decide on their own their local policy. They may or may not report it to the administration. They may or may not report it to parents. There's no reporting mechanism that enables the administration to collect, track and report on the number of hate speech incidents within the schools. We've heard of the N-word being used inappropriately, and we've heard of swastikas being drawn. Based on rumors between parents, the number of swastikas drawn in classrooms has increased dramatically since October 7th. But no one knows if that's true or not because it's not being reported or tracked. We hear occasional rumors about an email sent to a certain grade at a certain school, but we don't know what was done as a result. If we want to reduce hate speech within our schools and prevent it, we need to find ways to address it beyond just pure education. It is very important to define policies and procedures for hate speech prevention. What constitutes hate speech? How to report it? And how the administration is going to track these incidents? I urge you to adopt a policy and not defer on this critical topic, especially during these very tense times. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kita. Next, we have Mr. Hajar Delshad.
Um, Hajar, you should be seeing a panelist invitation. Um, if you want to, looks like you're trying to join now. Thank you. Um, David, maybe we should move to the next, uh, one second. Hajar's trying to try, join one more time. And Hajar, we can come back to you as well. Uh, maybe we should go to the next person, David?
All right, our next speaker is Mr. David Friedman.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. Hope you can hear me okay. Um, my name is Dave Friedman. I live on Corey Hill. I'm a parent. I'm also a lawyer and former First Assistant Attorney General for Massachusetts. I want to just pose the question is this, if a poison gas were seeping into classrooms and causing vulnerable students to get sick, wouldn't we immediately install filters to keep the poison out of the classroom? And if we had some filters, but then there was one more additional filter that was well designed to make sure the rest of the poison didn't get in, surely we would want to add that too. And not doing that would mean not meeting our duty to keep students and teachers safe. Well, hate of all sorts is poison. It directly harms student and teacher health. It interferes with learning. And the poison of hate has really exploded in our world in recent years. Most recently, as Ruby said, we've seen an explosion of antisemitism. It's a crisis recognized by the FBI, the Biden Administration and Congress, and advocacy groups have also reported an increase in Islamophobia. So I strongly urge you to adopt the proposed hate speech policy. And I'd like to address briefly two questions that have been raised, I think, in debate. First, there are many things that are not covered by existing law on bullying or harassment that still amount to hate speech, still do great damage, and are not protected by the First Amendment. The Attorney General's Office, which I used to help lead, has made clear that local districts do need to take affirmative steps to engage and provide guidance on this space in between harassment and bullying. Now, the examples of the policy, I think, make quite clear that there are things that may not be covered by existing law. Existing law on bullying or harassment may not cover the student or teacher who says things out loud like Jews control all the media or I hate transgender people. There's no such thing. Or someone who draws swastikas on desks. So having a hate speech policy does serve a very important purpose. It's an additional filter to keep additional hate out of the classroom. Now, the second thing is the ultimate goal of the policy is prevention, and having further clarity will help prevent hate. But some people have wondered about enforcement. Who's going to define these hard cases? Who decides what's hate speech? I have two things to say. First, I think most situations, in fact, patterns really aren't that hard, like the examples in the policy. And for cases that do seem close to the line, once you have a clear, well-crafted policy in place, then enforcement can be worked out by the superintendent's team, working closely with the school committee, with town council, with the AG's office. There may be occasional cases that do involve serious hard debate. The ACLU has supported, um, submitted a letter that's raised lots of questions. Well, their job is to spend lots of time on those very rare cases that end up in court. But, um, as an advocacy organization that this, that's focused on free speech, that's what they do. Based on my own experience, and that includes serving as a law clerk at the Supreme Court, I'm comfortable that the post-hate speech policy does not violate anyone's First Amendment rights or raise serious constitutional issues. I believe the important thing is to establish a strong culture and value system and a strong policy instead of rules to make clear that there should not be room for hate in our public schools. So I thank all of you who have worked in the policy to help address the serious crisis, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Why don't we try again, Ms. Hajar Delshad?
Hi, everyone. Uh, sorry about the technical issues and hello to Mini Pearlman, very, very cute baby. Thank you for showing us his cute face today. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, here to talk about the hate speech policy. Um, I was really dismayed that we are pushing this policy through. It feels very quickly, um, through kind of being rammed through the system. Um, I was present on multiple subcommittee meetings in which people, um, including the Director of Educational Equity showed, um, incredible, um, concern about this policy and also had advocated for us to maintain the policies of the bullying and harassment policies, um, and not enact yet another policy. This policy seems very hasty and it seems not very well thought out. Um, it is billed as a prevention policy, but it's really unlikely, um, to be used in just such that way. Uh, it really needs to either be withdrawn or be focused very, very, very narrowly to make sure that it's not weaponized against, uh, students. These are students who are still learning and it should not be used as a punitive action towards any student. In fact, the only way that it should be used is to identify patterns and figure out a way that we can address certain biases or certain patterns of hate in the school system and adjust that climate. Um, and most importantly, it's really important that we don't rush into any type of anti-bias training. Most of the anti-bias training is incredibly biased and it is funded by very well-established religious and political, um, machines that promote a certain ideology. It's very important that we very specifically cater and pick very specific, um, neutral, um, type of, uh, education faculties. And I, I really wonder, has the BEU even been consulted as to this policy? If the teachers are going to be on the front line of this, where's their input? What would they like to be doing? Uh, do they want to be the people that have to report these things? So this is far too early in the process. This policy needs a lot more work before it can go live.
Thank you, Ms. Delshad. Next, we have Ms. Donna Perry.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. I appreciate it. You can hear me okay, David? Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm here today just to speak in support of the hate speech prevention policy. I, um, I certainly agree with Hajar that there needs to be, uh, a, a mechanism to identify patterns at this particular moment in time. I'm not sure that mechanism exists. I recently requested incident reporting data um, for antisemitic incidents versus substantiated incidents for twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-four um, from the district, and that data seems to not be readily available, though it should be. I imagine the same is true for the availability of data regarding other types of incidents, whether they're Islamophobic, race-based, um, related to sexual orientation. Um, and I think that speaks to exactly why this prevention policy is what's needed. Uh, we need to ensure that the type of, uh, critical information we need regarding data and different patterns in schools and in our system is readily available, not only to the district, uh, and school-based administrators, but to the school committee, to students, to parents, to caregivers, so that we can all as a community truly embody the partnership needed to prevent hate incidents in our schools. Um, I have also spoken to a handful of educators at Brooklyn High School and several administrators um, in our buildings who feel as though they don't have enough, um, feel as though they would certainly benefit from having additional, um, mechanisms, which, um, I believe this hate speech policy provides or hate speech prevention policy. I also think that, um, you know, regarding concerns around free speech and the chilling effect of, um, a prevention policy, I would ask that folks think a little bit differently, um, for just a moment. Uh, in reality, speech in our schools is already chilled. Um, I think you've heard this from parents, from students. If you've talked to any educators, you will have heard them, heard this from them as well. And so we are already not having the conversations that we need to have. Um, this prevention policy will help us identify hate incidents, allow us to intervene, much like we would for every, any other issue with education and not with punishment, and hopefully provide a vehicle for us to start having conversations that we're not having at the moment. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And with that, we are now going to have a first reading of some policies. Since our public comment was all about hate speech, why don't we actually start with that one? Just let her be. So hate speech prevention policy. Uh, Steven in particular has done a lot of great work in updating some of the initial drafts. Uh, so even though the subcommittee approved of the first draft that, uh, everyone saw, I think it would make the most sense for us to work off of Steven's most recent draft. Betsy, would it be possible to pull that up?
Do that right now?
Thank you.
David, do you want me to talk through this?
Yes, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So, um, let me walk through this draft. Let's, feel free to interrupt me, everyone on the committee. Um, first, the beginning.
David, sorry, Steven, just as a preface, I actually think it was twenty nineteen. That, well, the AGO memo is the, the, uh,
The AGO memo, but the, um, the, the website guidance referenced a December twenty-three memo. In either case, I'll, I'll look back at it. Oh, I'll double check on that. So rather than end with a reference to the AGO, uh, guidance, I thought we could clarify, oh, let me back up even further. Previously, this was a hate speech policy. Now, this is a hate speech prevention policy. We talked about this briefly last time. The change in emphasis is that this is not a policy looking to A, adjudicate what is acceptable speech and what is hate speech, and B, it's not looking to, um, elaborate on what the consequences of our investigations of hate speech are to be. That remains left to schools, and that's discussed briefly in this policy. This policy is chiefly concerned with creating an environment to prevent hate speech and in so doing, fulfill an obligation uh, set forth by the Attorney General's Office, saying that we are now legally obliged to prevent and address hate and bias incidents. And so we start with that quote, um, saying that we have to do this in a proactive manner. And that's the, uh, that's the preamble to this policy. That's how it begins. Um, the first change, the first substantive change is that, uh, rather than have it start immediately in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I'm proposing that it start following the completion of initial trainings. I don't think it makes sense to have, uh, reporting take effect immediately upon the start of the school year, but rather upon the start of, upon the completion of trainings. Um, I'll go on. The definition is the same. There are changes in the examples. Um, I eliminated what was previously C, which was about canards. I thought that was duplicative with, uh, with, um, the previous example, which was about stereotypes. David, if you think it wasn't duplicative and there was something that's lost by eliminating that, I'm open to, to reverting that.
All right, I'm, I'm fine with this change.
Okay. Um, I took Val's, uh, comment that we should, we should call, we should, we should refer to transgender people, not transsexuals. That's a previous term and now a slur. Uh, moving on to education, here's where there are some very substantive changes, I think. Um, the most substantive change is I added C, another carve-out, which is the use of what is otherwise considered hate speech by people within groups against whom that speech would typically be directed as hate speech, but when uttered by them in a non-hateful manner, which I've described as self-temperating, familiar, friendly or re-appropriated, it is not to be considered hate speech. So this, I think, would constitute a gray area. The example I gave is the use of the N-word colloquially in African-American vernacular English. I also elaborated the teacher-led discussions example and broadened it. So rather than swastikas in Buddhism, I'm, I, I'm describing swastikas in Nazi Germany, so, or in Buddhism, or as religious symbols, or and used by contemporary white supremacist organizations. So the point is if they are discussed, um, by teachers within a historical context, that's a legitimate discussion of hate speech. And in this case, hate speech is, uh, iconography. So that's B. So moving on to what is now four, vigilance. I deleted the mandated reporter, reporter approach for two reasons. There was an approach in here that stated that if you, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up one huge step. Um, one of the big reasons that this policy was drafted in the first place was after discussion with the Office of Educational Equity, we were looking to identify a policy gap. What would, what would hate speech, what would a hate speech prevention policy do that isn't already being done by our bullying, discrimination and harassment policies? So just to be really clear, hate speech, um, unlike bullying can happen once, hate speech, unlike discrimination, um, cannot necessarily impede access to education, cannot create and does not necessarily create an, an unequal environment for learning. So if you, for instance, overhear a slur being uttered on campus grounds once in a way that would not have, uh, otherwise impeded your access to education, that could be hate speech, though not discrimination and not bullying. And that was previously not covered by our policies. The reason I'm bringing this up here is, one, I'm trying to express the possible slot for this policy. And two, I want to, I want to try to fairly describe why the mandated, mandated reporter approach was described in the first place. In the first place, the policy described an approach where if you heard it, if you see something, say something, if you heard it, you had to say something, you had to report it. I don't think that's the right approach for two reasons. One is I think, um, that's not the culture at BHS. There's no honor code there. Um, and I think having something run against that culture would be a poor fit. And two, I think, uh, that would create, uh, a possible chilling atmosphere around hate speech rather than a very vigilant atmosphere. I think there are other ways to, to promote an atmosphere of preventing hate speech. Um, that's the vigilance section. Should I stop here and see if there are comments or should I just keep going? I feel like I'm talking forever.
So do you want to have any questions for Steven up to this point?
I have one on the training and the other first page.
On train, let me, let me keep going then because education is going to cover training.
Is it going to cover the timeframe in which that has to happen to kick in the policy? Is that's my question?
No, but let me just cover what it is and then let's talk about it. Um, if that's all right with you, Val.
Yeah, I want to make sure we're talking about the same education. I'm, I'm not talking about, you know, that's okay. Let's do this, but I, I do want to have a, a discussion on when this gets implemented, so.
Okay. Okay, the, uh, so I was, I was a no vote on the subcommittee because I thought this wasn't ready. I, I'm introducing this with, still with ambivalence about the policy, and a large reason for that is the education session. I, I, I feel like it's very important to get this right for, and what, what specifically I want to make sure we get right is, who is being trained? What are we using to do the training and who is doing the training? So, um, I, I added a line saying that we're committed to critical thinking skills as the foundation of distinguishing between acceptable and hate speech. It's not all about making the distinction between the line. It's also about promoting thinking about what hate speech is. And then I added A and B. So this, I'm really interested in the committee's feedback. I don't know whether you'll think this is a good idea or not, and I'm very open to anyone's feedback. So Section A, which nobody has seen before, is, and I'll just read this. "To prevent the introduction of bias into hate speech trainings, PSB will establish a hate speech prevention advisory group. The advisory group will be composed of Brooklyn community members who represent diverse ethnic, racial, religious, national, sexual identity, gender identity and disability identity groups. The advisory group will be called upon to advise the Office of Educational Equity and the Office of Teaching and Learning to review new training materials and curriculum to ensure their neutrality, fairness and inclusiveness. B, to further prevent the introduction of bias into trainings and materials, PSB will make every effort when hiring outside groups to work with organism, when hiring outside groups, comma, to work with organizations with strictly educational missions without other advocacy objectives." So this is my effort to ensure that the education section, uh, works with neutral resources, works with neutral organizations, um, but has not, I think, yet identified exactly how this is going to roll out. There's no how in here yet. I might as well just finish this off because I'm almost done. Uh, data reporting is largely unchanged. I added a, a line about restorative justice rather than discipline. That's not, that doesn't mean that we're only going to engage in restorative justice. Um, I'm sorry, I, I added restorative justice to the line about discipline, just saying that there's a, an array of consequences. Um, and I, and I restored what was there in an earlier draft about remediation because I think there needs to be a statement that remediation is relevant to this policy. because I think there needs to be a statement that remediation is relevant to this policy. I just copied and pasted what was there in the first draft, which is that it will be left to schools, it will be tailored to the, to the instance and it shall uh, be aligned to the code of conduct. So those are the changes that I made from the subcommittee's last since, since the subcommittee's vote. So I'll stop there.
All right, any other questions or comments from any one of the committee?
Yeah, thank you, David. Thank you, Stephen, for this work. Uh, I am wondering, uh, as you talked about the advisory committee, if who has been on advisory of, of this of this particular policy? Have we gotten input, as one of our speakers suggested, uh, from teachers, from administrators? Have we heard from town council about this? Uh, I'm just curious.
I, I have spoken with um, some community members, including some of the commenters. I thought uh, Hajar's suggestion that we speak with the BEU on this was a very good suggestion. And we have not, um, and we have not spoken with town council, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I guess I would encourage us to do that.
I, I'll also say that I have not spoken with Claire. I haven't spoken with you about it and Jody, I haven't spoken with you but either reference both of your offices. So this remains an early draft in my view.
Okay, thanks.
Sarah?
I, I've been present for all the conversations on this, but I, um, I'm sorry to speak up, not to offer um, expertise, but to ask you about your expert, expertise. As I haven't ever served on the policy committee, could you walk me through, any of you, not just Stephen, where, where are the parts that you uh, implemented into the writing of this that you thought that it would really like actually happen? You know, what, when you drafted a policy, how do you make sure that it's not just something that stays in a file somewhere, but it actually has impact? And so to answer that, I was wondering if you could point at any times that you've tried to use some sort of mechanism or strategy in order to make sure that there will be impact from this policy?
I yield to you, David.
So I drafted the first version of this and there was a reporting section with certain dates that district staff would be expected to present to school committee its findings once a year to help inform us on the direction to go in. So that's one deliverable. That's fairly common in a lot of our policies. My son's very talkative, so perhaps someone else can add in some more.
Super helpful, thank you.
I would say, Sarah, to me, there are two objectives of this policy. One is to foster an environment in which hate speech occurs less frequently. The second is to gather concrete data around the occurrence of hate speech in our district so that we can make decisions around the policy decisions. Decisions pertaining to the consequences of events of hate speech and so on. Those to me are the chief objectives of this policy. So we'll know if we achieved our goal if we see a decline in hate speech over time. We don't have a baseline, so in some ways it'll be difficult to measure the former, but the latter will at least help us start to better measure occurrences of hate speech. I think um, Claire and Christina have already done a good job starting to upgrade our mechanism for, for collecting data. I, I thought the job that they did at the last DEI meeting was
Agreed.
Showed impressive progress in what we as a district have done previously. I know that doesn't fully answer your question, but that's, I'm just telling you how I view what this policy is doing.
Valerie?
Thanks, David. Um, I, I do think, Stephen, we need some dates in here. I, I think that the reporting is important like in all of our, or most of our policies, having a reporting mechanism back to school committee. Um, and also on the, the question I raised earlier, I, I worry that if we don't have some measure of time, leaving it to when training is complete is pretty vague and um, doesn't really give us a sense of when we're gonna start implementing policy.
Zan?
Thank you, David. So um, there are a couple of things. Um, yeah, I know in training, I feel like we ask for training, well, a lot of things and a lot of areas and they're all good. Uh, but realistically, I would guess that this training would be a part of a harassment, discrimination, bullying training. I mean, I, so I would encourage us to think about that because we can't, we can't put on training for all our staff in each of the areas separately. We just don't have that kind of time and we need to tie that together for them. So that would certainly be one suggestion.
I totally agree with that, by the way, Suzanne. I, I think in the future, I would love to see that actually those policies be tied together as well.
Yeah, yeah, I, there's, there's just a lot of overlap, unfortunately, or it, it's just the nature of what they are. And then the other is on the reporting system. I just, I'm not sure how that's going to work. Who does the reporting? I think, did you say there, it would be a public reporting or be a place for the public to report as well? Where would that go and then who would follow up on the, on the investigations if it were from, so could families report? Is that the idea or students could report?
So, so I don't think the reporting system should be any different from our current reporting system for bullying, harassment and discrimination. I, I, uh, let me, let me say two things. I think that the, the reporting system should be very user-friendly, should be one simple URL with a poster attached to it with a QR code. And that we don't, we should have a dropdown that's optional if you want to specify the form of discomfort that, that the student experiences or the teacher or the person experiences, but that someone on the backend could fill that in. So we don't have to burden the, the person who suffered the abuse with, with knowing how to make that distinction. Uh, that, that's my view of what the reporting mechanism should look like. And I think Claire and Christina did a really nice job describing how this is being digitized and rolled out in the future. But I still think we have a ways to go with upgrading this reporting mechanism. I just think that hate speech needs to be rolled into it. Should not be a separate reporting mechanism.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Simple and direct.
Yeah, and, and when that we should actually speak to those administrators and, and people who have maybe guidance council, social workers who have been helping with the filing of harassment and bullying uh, incident reports. We could learn from them, what, what they learn, what works and what doesn't work. Um, so that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Ellen?
Well, thank you for your work on this. Um, I, one of the things that um, I think I heard you said, but I'm not sure, is that we haven't really included our uh, staff so much on this. Uh, and I think that's critical.
I agree.
They're the ones we're gonna expect to implement if we, if we do this. Um, I think it's really critical to have the input and for us to hear what that input is from the the different staff, uh, certainly our, our senior staff and some, some principals, you know, who may have opinions about it. That would be one. Secondly, in the past, we've usually run um, uh, policies by town council just to make sure that we're not stepping on or doing something illegal or whatever. Uh, so I, I would recommend doing that too.
We can certainly run this by town council and also make it available for staff to review for input. I agree.
Yeah, I, I think I would, I would be more proactive in terms of staff and speaking with them uh, about this.
To address a comment by Suzanne about the specifics of the reporting, oftentimes when we draft policies, we're told leave it somewhat flexible so that district staff is going to promulgate corresponding procedures that we should not be too detailed and too specific in uh, dictating essentially the central office how to handle this, that the policy is to set more of a tone and show where the school committee's values are and what it is that we are looking for macro level and then leave it to district staff to implement it. So I think that's also reflected in this language here, although I do agree with Valerie that it would be helpful to uh, have specific dates return. Just so that we make sure we're moving in the right direction. Anyone else?
Can I ask the committee pending feedback from the administration and others? What's your reaction to the idea of an advisory group um, composed of the community, of community representatives? That is available to, I, I know it's sometimes my, perhaps a weakness of mine to want to create many committees and advisory groups. And the school committee has rightfully checked me on this weakness. So I want to, I want to ask you to check me again. Do you think this is, what do you think of this idea?
We're not going to see Charlotte, so.
Su, I think, Susan, you're not on mute. I, I, my interest here is in, is in leveraging community voice to help ensure that we aren't introducing bias and we're looking to prevent it. And knowing that this is a very uh, very volatile, difficult space, I thought this might be the sort of place where an advisory group might be an asset to administration.
I'm personally very supportive of that, Stephen, because I think it also provides an important check in terms of public buy-in regarding the education that's taking place and the types of materials being used. As long as the committee has an understanding that their function is purely advisory and not making the ultimate decision, because sometimes that's a line that can be blurred. And I think that's where uh, district leadership will occasionally bristle at having all of these committees, but in terms of having public buy-in and participation and engagement, I'm always supportive of that.
Dr. Fortuna, I think this is something I would really want to go through with you. I wouldn't want to impose this on your office without thoroughly vetting it with you.
Suzanne, then, and Sarah?
Yeah, I just, I would just have some quite hard questions about implementation and creation of such a board or committee or group, I guess it is, advisory group. I mean, what, it would be under Dr. Fortuna's office, is that, or is it Dr. Givens and, and who would convene the group, who would select the group, who would convene it? How often would they meet? I mean, and I know those are the, in the weeds, but that's, that's where something like this gets stuck. Because it, it's a lot of details and someone has to attend to those and I'm just curious what your vision is, Stephen, for that?
Um, I don't have a in-the-weeds vision for it. So that would have to be worked out.
What we typically do is have a school committee member sort of run the task force group or the advisory group and then serve as a liaison to district staff about the group's findings. Also, uh, we have an application process usually for anyone who's interested in serving on a particular committee. And then we try as a committee to select a representative body uh, and by different demographics. So I imagine we would do something similar here. Sarah?
I feel the need to say the thing that um, I think is not being said right now is is a group that would be completely balanced going to make, mean that there won't be a decision taken? And will this hold up the work? So I just wanted to say like, is there, um, are are there ways of doing training that are out there that would make everybody happy? Like, do you, do you really realistically think that this group could come to a consensus?
I don't see it as having an executive function. I see it as sourcing the possible objections so that, so that the executive-making bodies, which I think are OTL and OEE would be aware of possible objections and could make a decision with the full knowledge of what, uh, what objections would be. So we, we wouldn't be caught unaware that, say, uh, a potential consultancy was funded by an advocacy organization um, in a way that we weren't aware previously. That, that's my vision of this, of an advocacy organization like that. I, I think this space is crowded with complexity and I, and I think, I mean, I think of all of us, Dr. Fortuna and Claire are more aware of these complexities than anyone else, but I think it's probably a full-time job, just keeping tabs on who is playing what role in the political and religious advocacy space. So I think a group like this would do a lot to keep to keep us well informed on, on uh, to what extent there's and, and what might be the most neutral training materials, facilitators and so on for any particular curriculum. That's how I see it.
That really helps me understand what you mean by advisory. So that's very helpful.
Okay.
Ellen?
Well, just as a suggestion, you may wanna make this group an ad hoc group. Rather, ad hoc advisory group is fine, that with their purpose to review new training materials and curriculum. And so then the Office of Educational Equity and the Office of Teaching Learning can call on them, but
That, that, that's what I meant. So I
Advisory group has more permanent sound to me as opposed to ad hoc committee.
Thank you. I'll take that suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, I'm just throwing it out there, village, for, for people. It, it helps to, well, yeah.
Stephen, do you have any objections to putting some firm dates back in beyond
No, not at all.
June twentieth reporting? Okay.
I, did I take them out?
I thought I saw them somewhere.
If I did, then I'm happy to revert them. The only thing I don't wanna do is put dates in that precede the completion of training. So I would make, I would, I would wanna make sure that that aligns with what administration feels comfortable with.
Well, Val, I see that we actually do have dates. So the hate speech prevention policy shall take effect immediately upon passage of this policy by the school committee. The protocols and annual report provisions will take effect during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year following completion of initial trainings. So while it doesn't have a specific date, it does say it would happen sometime during next school year. Did you want something that's more specific than that?
No, but I thought Stephen was saying that he removed that. So maybe I just missed it. I, I thought Stephen, you were saying that you removed that so that it was just.
Oh, no, in the, sorry, just in the introduction, I said that this policy will take effect. Um, the, the report, the annual report provisions. Oh, I think I made a, I think I made a mess of a sentence. The last sentence before definitions doesn't really make sense now. I said the annual report provisions will take, during the school year following the completion of trainings. So let me fix that. Well, no, 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 the protocols would take effect following the completion of the initial trainings. So you can't really follow protocols unless you know how to do them. So previously, you'd have to follow the protocols immediately upon the start of the school year. That was the change I was, that's the only change I was referring to regarding dates.
Okay, I mean, I think as long as the training is within the school year, and I think as Suzanne said, if it is part of a, a sort of suite of training that we're doing, it shouldn't be too challenging to get completed in that timeframe.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm not trying to get stuck on one thing, but I do think uh, training of all, I'm not sure who we're training, all staff. Um, that's a lot of people. That's a lot of training. And so again, we should just kind of think through what that timing would look like. I mean, I think you'd have to check with OTL or, or Equity Office of Equity to see what they think that might look like as a timeframe. You know, we're talking about every staff member. I mean, that's a large, large group. And, and so, you know, maybe, maybe it's easily doable, but I just think we need to think that through a little bit for really thinking about when this might take effect.
Are we not, I'm sorry, ignorance here. Are we not already training everyone in bullying, discrimination and harassment though? I, I guess I assume this would live alongside those trainings.
Yeah, I don't, I would, I would have to check how much training we do every year. I mean, whether it's a reminder and, or review or at or review or whether it's an initial training. I mean, those, so those are the things you have to think about when you, when I think about, when I think about training. You know, it's one thing if you've been trained initially and this is just a review so that, you know, you remember where everything is and you go, aha, yeah, that's right. But if this is the first time you're being trained in this, that's usually more in-depth. And so that might, I mean, that might not be an auditorium full of a thousand people. That might be very differently done. It might be done in this local schools, might be, I have to think about release time. I mean, I don't know. These are just things I'm thinking about when I think about training.
Understood. Thank you, Suzanne.
All right, anyone else? Andy?
Yeah, I I think um I I do share what I take to be Suzanne's concerns about just how unwieldy this advisory group would be, whether we call it an advisory group or uh an ad hoc committee or whatever. I mean, I'm just imagining trying to pull together, you know, determine the membership of a truly representative and inclusive group, convene them at appropriate times, you know, focus the discussion well, uh digest the results and then make sure that they feed into district actions in the appropriate way. I mean, it seems to me to require the the level of effort that we might put into, say, a superintendent search. Um, and I I worry that this could quickly get out of hand, you know, or because it's so difficult that it just would come to nothing.
I'm a little less concerned about that, Andy, because we've done this with sustainability. We've done this with school building names. We have done this in other areas and often people express, we've done it with program reviews. People express an interest, they fill out an application, and then we choose a membership that seems diverse based on the interest. So I I think it's doable, but I I respect how others might feel otherwise.
And the difference here would be just the level of contentiousness of the subject matter that the committee is called on to address. I mean, yeah, we do have some arguments over school renaming, but probably nothing on the level that we would see here.
We could consider this an asynchronous ad hoc committee as well, where we solicit the input of the same um, the this group via email, for instance.
All right, that could work where there's a membership, but they don't necessarily meet with each other. This was the same people that we go to for feedback.
Yeah, it's, I, Andy, I agree. It's a legitimate concern. I haven't thought that level of detail.
All right, so this was the first read. Uh, some actionable steps. We'll make a few changes based upon what we've heard today. We will send it to town council for his review. We'll also solicit feedback from staff. And then we'll have a conversation about it again on May second. And we do have another policy to look at for first reading.
I suggest not making May second the next. Sorry.
I won't be like it.
Just too soon, I think.
But but can we spend a little more time getting uh feed high-level feedback?
All right. Helen?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to let people know I need to leave at six for the Z I B meeting. They're going to be discussing our Article One on geothermal wells and supporting it. And so they've asked me to to be there. So just want to let everybody know why I'm, why I'm leaving. Uh, I can try and come back if you're still going at it, but we were supposed to finish at six fifteen.
I think we'll still be able to. So we only have one other substantive item, which is first reading of the assignment of students to schools revised policy. The policy subcommittee unanimously recommended that we do a pilot run of the portion that would say that students can remain in their original school even when they move to another part of Brookline. And we would try that on a trial basis essentially for a year. See if that becomes unwieldy in terms of our enrollment. Any questions or comments or further context? Suzanne?
Yeah, there was just, uh, I, there's at least one place, maybe others, where we talk about parents. And I'm wondering if we might substitute families or guardians in there.
Okay, we can do that. Helen?
Once more, my question is, have we run this by the staff who would be involved with doing this?
We have since October and we haven't really gotten a response. So I think that's why we've decided to, at least the subcommittee decided to move along and try this as a pilot. And another reason for that is no matter what data would be provided to us, we would never have an answer as to how many families would utilize this, given that it hasn't been an option to date. It's always been ultimately superintendent's discretion. And so this would create a new landscape. So no existing data would really inform as to whether more families would make a request for students to attend a school that's in a neighborhood outside of their uh home district or buffer zone. Anyone else? Any other suggestions for modified language? Is the committee okay with trying this as a pilot for next year? Looks like we are.
First reading, right?
This is just the first reading. We're not voting on it yet, but I'm just wondering whether we want to change any of the language around before uh we solicit feedback from the broader community.
I, I once more would like to get feedback from the superintendent on this.
Okay. All right, next up, then, we have an F Y twenty five budget update. I don't know if Mariah or Dr. Givens, you'd like to provide that?
Is Susan here? I'm sorry, I can't.
She is.
She is.
Okay. Susan, would you like to give the update or would you like me to give a brief update?
Either way is fine. I, we have a meeting tonight. Um, at last week's advisory council. Um, our budget proposal was received well. They had a few questions. Uh, they would like us to provide some answers to tonight. And we're looking forward to engaging in a conversation with them in a, in a, about an hour. So um C I P, uh Helen and I and um Mariah uh crafted a memo and sent it off to the Board of Selectmen to ask for their support for our uh C I P uh request for this year. Um, and and again, that was um a very productive meeting. The Board of Selectmen will be um sharing some concerns that we share mutually with the advisory committee. Uh, they will be discussing our capital improvements um at the advisory committee meeting tonight as well. So I don't know if there's any additional uh updates you'd like to include, Mariah or Helen?
Nope, that was perfect for my end.
Well, they may be voting on the C I P and part of it, they have reduced our um, that what we have asked for for the Baldwin School so that it um is not, will not bring the building up to the quality that we would want. And it would be great if anybody here can join the meeting. That would be terrific on the school committee. Uh, it's tonight and they'll be discussing it at between seven and eight.
What was the rationale given for the reduction, Helen?
I sent out an email that that they wrote up. I I don't have time now to go through the whole rationale.
Okay, I'll just go look for it.
I'm sorry for not having. Page five of the email that they sent out, giving the rationale and their conditions of appropriation. It's important to read that.
I will, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the update? Uh, Susan or Mariah, perhaps you want to share the good news that we got out of Town School Partnership?
I didn't attend Town School Partnership, so I don't have all the details.
All right, so we are going to have approximately another fifty thousand dollars in our budget for next year based upon some new calculations. All right, and oh, and also, uh, I've been reminded that regarding the school attendance policy, we would be looking at K through eight, not including B. That was something else that we had discussed, so we just want to make that clear. Is that okay with everyone?
Can you explain how B would even be impacted by this, given it's not a geographic assignment to begin with?
Because some of our K eight schools do have B classrooms. So we're not sure that we want to commit ourselves to saying that because a student is in B at F R R, for instance, therefore that student gets to stay at F R R for the duration of the academic career there.
I see, understood, thank you.
All right, so with that, is there any new business?
David, this isn't your last meeting, is it?
No, one more on next week.
Okay.
Um, David, we do also have the um M O A, Ask Me M O A.
Oh, that's right, my apologies. So we had questions at the last meeting regarding the Ask Me M O A for a twelve-month full-time food service driver. And we had some questions about that. Uh, Dr. Givens, could you perhaps clarify what this contract is for and what it particularly covers?
Absolutely. So um for the past several years, our drivers have um, who are also kind of like like utility workers for the food service department um have uh had school year contracts. And then, uh, of course, we do provide um food service programming for the community during the summer. And so one of our drivers was receiving a second contract to work during the summer. Um, so what this M O A um allows us to do is instead of issuing one con or two contracts that we would be uh issuing one contract since the employee has been basically working year round anyways. So that's really um why we're bringing this forward for your consideration.
Any questions for Dr. Givens regarding the contract? Seeing none, I would like to move that we approve the Ask Me contract for the twelve-month driver. Is there a second? Stephen?
David, can I just ask a question? I don't remember all the questions from last time, but I thought there were more questions about it. Like, is someone in the role now, which I think we just answered? I know that was one of them, but were there other questions from last time?
I think there had been a question about whether this is something that we contemplated in our budget.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you. Were there other questions that came up?
That I recall, I think it was those two, whether it's something we have now and whether we can afford it, whether we planned it in our budget.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Stephen, you vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, now we get to new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we are adjourned. All right, good night, everyone.